Good. Welcome to our city council meeting. It's May twenty-second. It's seven o'clock. It says seven oh one, but it's seven o'clock. That'll do. We're gonna dispense with the roll call. Everybody's here, and especially we were gonna call on every one of you, but you're here too. So, thank you for being here. We're gonna start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance, and I would ask if anyone would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'll do it.
Please repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask if anyone would offer an invocation or share with us an inspirational thought? Anyone?
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this time to gather together in the Santa quin City Council. We are grateful to be members of this great community, and we're grateful for the many blessings that we receive. We're grateful for our safety and security and beauty that we have here. We're grateful for those that are serving this community, and we pray for them that they may be inspired and that they can make the best decisions for us as a people and for the growth of our community. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Carl. Appreciate it. Does anyone have a declaration of a potential conflict of interest on anything that we're going to discuss tonight? Good to go and move on. So, our consent agenda will consist of six different items, and they've been published now for a few days. If anybody wanted to look at those, you'll know what it was, but the rest of us have gone through each of those items, and we discussed it in the last meeting. But I will go through them just line by line and make sure we check them off. So, on the April twenty-third city council budget review meeting minutes, any issues you want to bring up? Any questions you may have? Okay. Number two, on the April thirtieth work session, are there any corrections, additions, changes, mistakes? Okay. On item three, it's the April thirty regular business meeting, or the regular city council meeting. Any issues, anything you want to bring up with that? Number four is May the seventh city council work session meetings. Any issues? Anything? Number five is the regular city council meeting from the seventh. Any questions? Anything? And the bills, which were the expenditures from April twenty-seventh to May seventeenth, the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine twenty-three and ninety-six cents. Sheesh. Any questions on those? Did you go through them? That you had any issues that you didn't bring up already? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Travis?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Okay. Any other questions for it all? Then we'll move on. Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Good. I wanna go into the recognitions in the public forum. Recognitions are the volunteers of the month, Carl Timont and Scott Wadsworth, and John Still, oh yeah, gosh, you're hiding behind Dave. That's what it was.
I'm gonna go ahead and have both Carl Timont and Scott Wadsworth come up, and then afterwards we'll have their families come up in the second.
Do you want me to get you a stool while they stand on either side of you? Just in case.
These are like my bodyguards. So, if anyone ever says, hey, there's a cougar up in the mountains, I'm okay if I'm with these guys, right?
No, they can outrun you.
They do have longer legs. They would both rather be up on the mountain, either on their bikes or working on the trails, but for this evening, for a short, brief time, we've been able to get them to come here. When we had an opportunity to look at who the volunteer of the month would be, I just couldn't have one of them come without the other because they're always up on the trails doing different things to help the trail development, sharing ideas, marking, ribbinging the routes. But I've got some specific things I wanna read here. Let's start out with Carl Timont here on my left. Has been a member of the Santaquin Trail Committee since the beginning of Prospector View Park in two thousand twenty-two. He actually was part of an informal committee probably years before that, right? An informal committee with the two of them, and they're maybe they're kids. He's been instrumental in marking new trails and developing trail vision. He has donated hundreds of hours of work. Carl is the community services director in Payson, and as busy as he is, always finds time to volunteer in Santaquin where he lives. Carl and his children have been active participants with the Nebo Goats Mountain biking club and are part of the Payson team. Carl's youth was spent in Portsmouth, Virginia. He graduated from BYU in Recreation Administration and moved to Santaquin in the year two thousand. He married his sweetheart Jennifer, and they have more than two children.
Two at home.
Two at home.
Five children.
Five children. I was gonna say, I know there's more than that. In his spare time, Carl enjoys hiking, mountain biking, and boating. When asked why he spends time working on the trail, he stated, "I enjoy seeing the benefit the park is to the community with the added health and wellness it provides those who use it." So, let's give a round of applause to Carl Timont. And Scott here has, Wadsworth, has been a member of the, also, the Santaquin Trails Committee since its founding as well in two thousand twenty-two. He has worked with Carl in marking many of our new trails and has likewise donated hundreds of hours of work. Scott owns a hydro seed company and has donated grass seed and flower seed along Prospector View Trailhead, its parking lot, and trail areas. He's provided his own side-by-side to assist with placement of signage on the east bench leading to Prospector View Park. Scott was raised in Mapleton, Utah, and he graduated from UVU in business. His hydro seed company has been in business since the year two thousand and two and has focused on seeding and erosion control. Scott and his wonderful family have lived in Santaquin for the past eighteen years. In his free time, Scott enjoys mountain biking, snowmobiling, camping, and dirt bike riding. I liked, Scott stated, "I like to see the progression of the trail as we work on it." And when he asked why he likes to volunteer for the project, he said, "It is exciting to see all the volunteers work together to make it happen, and it's nice to see people use the new trails and better their lives." So, thank you, Scott and Carl, for all your work on Prospector View Park. Let's give Scott a round of applause, too. And while family's coming up for a picture, one more round of applause for both of them, please. Go ahead and comes down on this side right here.
You know, I've been waiting for this time when some guy says, "I enjoy mountain biking, hiking, riding on trails, snowmobiling, motorcycles, and family hitchhiking." Oh, he is that guy.
That was on the, the, the.
The Gokka. I'll give you that part. Cause he wants that part.
Thanks for recognizing us.
Oh, no, gosh, I love you, Ben.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. We're happy to thank you, Travis. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Oh, hey, thank you.
It's gonna be hard to volunteer basically what your job is.
Yeah, for like fifty years.
Long enough.
Oh, goodness.
I have a long memory, it's just I'm not very accurate.
Public forum, we're gonna scratch the building permits and the business licenses and go into the public hearings so we can just move right along. Anything else? Haven't forgotten something, have I? Okay. Well, good. We need to open a formal public hearing for the budget amendment. And so, I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendment three. So moved? It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay. We're in a public hearing at seven twelve, and there were, there was information that was given, published, and if anybody wanted to read it online or any other places, they were welcome to do so. Everything was noticed. This is for the transfer of the funds for the cemetery, so.
Yeah, so mayor and council, this is a public hearing for budget amendment number three, which is very specific as we discussed in the work session. This is for a transfer of one point three million dollars from, one point three, two million dollars from the general fund rainy day fund or reserve funds to purchase property that we've been negotiating on.
So, we have discussed it even in the work session, however, with this public forum?
Public hearing.
Hearing, sorry. Formal public hearing.
Correct.
I would ask, since nobody had signed up for it, does anybody want to say anything? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved? It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one. The formal public hearing for Santaquin City fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget transfers therein. This is a public hearing only. I would entertain a motion to open up this public hearing.
So moved.
Been moved. Is there a second? Second? Moved and seconded. Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay.
Mayor and council, this is a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget for the city itself. Again, the budget has been, has been noticed and was actually, the tentative budget was passed two weeks ago as required by state law, and we passed that in the first meeting of May. This is just an opportunity for you as a council, but mostly for the residents, if there's anybody that has public comment on that particular budget.
So, we discussed it last time. It's been published, and we've gone through it with a fine-tooth comb and even floss at this point. But since no one signed up, are there any comments that we should take? I should've said this was started at seven fourteen, seven thirteen. Okay. So, any, anyone that would like to comment on it, then I would entertain that we close this public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded. Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
One of these days, I'm gonna forget your names, and then I'm just gonna look stupid for a while, I guess. Who knows? This particular public hearing, and nobody signed up for it, but the explanation for this is kind of upsetting to me. It's, it's state law that was just passed that says basically that any of our directors' appointed positions that any time, any changes made in their wage, that a public forum had to be open, and people would have a chance to comment one way or another. And it's a silly law. I'm, I'm sorry. Can I say that? You just did. Thank you. Cause I was gonna anyway, and we're just lucky I left it at that, cause I have other feelings. Anyway, I don't wanna badmouth it too bad, but comments, do you want to go over?
I'm happy to read the memo.
I think it would be best, that way it's clear and it's on the record. And these are, this really has to do with COLA at this point.
Yeah, so mayor and council members, as you're aware, during the two thousand twenty-four Utah legislative session, the state legislature passed Senate Bill ninety-one or SB ninety-one, as I'll refer to here, and one part of SB ninety-one reads, "Before a governing body may adopt a final budget," I'll remind you that we've only adopted a tentative budget at this point in time, the final will be in two weeks. "Before a governing body may adopt a final budget or a final amended budget that includes a compensation increase for executive municipal officer, the governing body shall quote, 'hold a public hearing on the compensation increases.'" Therefore, we have properly noticed and are holding the required public hearing this evening, right now during this council meeting. First Santaquin City handbook, employee handbook, as adopted by resolution and is recently amended in December of twenty-four, all employees, including elected officials and executive municipal officers, as they are defined in SB ninety-one, are eligible for salary increases for both cost of living adjustments, or COLA, and merit increases where and when applicable and as adequately budgeted for. And I referenced the handbook there. If you have questions, I'm happy to go to that. At present, the tentative budget that was approved two weeks ago includes a COLA increase for all employees of five percent starting January of two thousand twenty-five. Also at present, included in the tentative budget is a possible one percent merit increase for all for, for all employees. Therefore, the total possible increase for all employees is up to six percent during the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Per employment contracts for all of our executive municipal officers, as they are defined in the code, each of them is treated the same as any other employee with regard to any offered COLA and possible merit increases. Therefore, that is what has been budgeted for in the current tentative budget and what is planned to be budgeted for. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this agenda item during the proper, properly known as public hearing or any time during this meeting. No council action is required at this time. This is just a, a meeting of state code.
So, actually, this is a formal public hearing, and so, since nobody has signed up for it, I still will ask, is there anybody that would like to make a comment or they feel like there's anything that needs to be said? Okay. Hearing none? Hang on, we need to make it change.
I just didn't notice this in the work session, but when you referenced the employee manual or the city manual, it said as of December twenty twenty-four, I was wondering if that should say twenty twenty-three?
Correct. I'm sorry. That should say as amended in twenty twenty-three. Thank you for that and resolution twelve oh three, twenty-three. I apologize, your, thank you for that correction.
Ooh, good catch. We've only read that fifteen times. Nobody reads the fine print. That makes sense.
Not December.
It's the future.
Okay. So.
It was that smooth reading that got me. I will say, I did talk to Doug Welton about this, and it might not happen next year.
I talked to Doug Welton as well. We've been working on it.
We'll be working on not having this happen again.
Perfect. So, we called the same guy. Actually, I, I sent texts to a few others as well, so.
Probably good.
We're trying to work down the legal way on this. It's just a waste of time. Gah. Anyway, hearing no other comments other than our own's that sometimes ought to be stricken from the records, I would ask if we could entertain a motion to get out of the public hearing?
So moved.
Been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Good. New businesses. We dispensed with that since we didn't have the other information, and the problem is we've been working on a couple of other things. Next time, we'll just catch up. So, we do have a lot of good things happening with businesses, though. Oh my goodness. There has been a lot of neat things going on. We need to move into resolutions, so item number eleven is the adoption of a public safety impact fees. Now, we talked about this some months ago, it's come up, and this is just some changes that we need to make, and we're just trying to catch up and make sure we don't get behind.
Yeah, so mayor and council, this is a resolution to adopt a new impact fees for just the fire and EMS for residential and non-residential. We, you may recall, three months ago, we did the, a formal public hearing and adopted the, the new impact fee facilities plan and I, and impact fee analysis for public safety, updating the costs on the fire truck that we know we have ordered now, and also the anticipated additional cost to the new fire station. So, these fees reflect that, and would, that we've waited now the ninety-day waiting period according to the state law, and can, these can be adopted tonight as the maximum amount of, of impact fees for fire and EMS.
Be it noted that this is the only change that's.
That's correct.
Being made at this time.
Other, other than the date up at the top, this is, that's the only change within that fee schedule document that's being changed at this point in time.
Okay. Any questions? I'd entertain a motion then to approve resolution oh five oh four, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded. Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Good. Let's move on to number twelve, the resolution oh five oh five, the approval of two hundred thousand dollars for the Utah Outdoor Recreation Grant Funding Agreement. I have to sign these things, and John was very proficient in writing a proposal for this grant, and we won it. And this goes towards our Bike Skills Park that will be built starting about six weeks from now?
Yeah, till, just the second week of July.
Yeah. So, I'm just tickled that we have this to start with. It's cool that we can win money through state grants that we can apply that will go to not only the youth, this'll go to the old buggers that like to ride their mountain bikes on those parks, and you know, if you don't join me, I'll be there. Any, any comments? Any other information you wanna go over?
Nope. This is the same exact contract with just a newer number that we did two years ago when we did the original grant where we got the toilet and the, and the, the, did the work for the parking lot and that kind of thing. So, this is just allowing the, the, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement to get the funding coming.
We want the money. So, I'd entertain a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Moved and seconded? Just like that? Second? I thought you both talked.
Nope.
Just Travis. Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
So I can sign for the money?
Sign away.
Show me the money. Okay, got it. Thirteen, the approval of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendment number three.
Yeah, mayor and council, so this is resolution oh five oh six approving an amendment to the budget as we discussed earlier and as we've talked about. The, this amendment will allow us to transfer funds from our reserve account to allow us to purchase property that has been negotiated, which is the next item on the agenda, but before we can approve the purchase, we probably ought to have the money to do so. So, this is the, just the specific purpose, just for this purpose. Again, the, the cost of the property is one point three million, but the, the, there's probably ten or twenty thousand dollars in closing costs that we're also doing a potential transfer for so we can cover those costs and not have to do another amendment.
The one, the one thing I like about this is, you know, I've been working on it for the last twenty-eight months or whatever it is to find properties. I've met with many farmers and property owners, and I've looked at things that you probably wonder why we would even end up with a cemetery there, but we are running out. People are dying to get in there, and it's filling up. And, you know, as a kid, I used to think, oh, this place will never fill up, but it is. And I think the negotiation went very well. The property owners are very excited what this is going to be used for, and after the appraisals, I was actually pretty excited. We're dead on. And, you know, we haven't shorted anybody. We ended up with a very good piece of property that in the future, the city can just move straight into and say, here we go. Utilization of funds that we have, that just means that we don't have to go into debt, float a bond, or change taxes to come up with money. We can utilize a fund that we are able to then slowly pay back with many different ways, but it gives us a chance to utilize our own money and, and not burden the taxpayer or the citizens in any way to do this. I, I like the way we've done it. So, any questions?
No questions, just a comment. I fully support this action, obviously, but I would encourage all of us to try to as, as quickly as we can to start trying to reimburse that rainy day fund.
We, we were at max, and, and so, that, that still gives us working ways. I agree with you. I, this is one of those things now, we can just turn around and, and just get working straight on, but we're not losing interest, we're having to pay to somebody else to get it. We're, we're utilizing our own.
That's why I support this action.
I like it.
Do we need to adjust the tentative budget for planning for that, or we, we'll just amend that next fiscal year?
This is in this current year. The tentative budget starts July one.
But for paying back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. We'll look at that, we'll look at that and bring that to you. We already have a, some.
We, we adjust anything the last, last time we'll meet in June, so that at the first of July, this budget year's money will be balanced, and then we'll move straight into next year's.
Yeah.
No question. Okay? All right. Travis?
You need a motion, mayor.
Oh. Would that be okay?
I'll second.
Don't vote yet, whatever you do. Thought we did that.
I'll second.
And a second? Okay, well, I'm just trying to spend some money and get some money to go worth, okay? Travis?
Who needs approval?
I'll make him, I'll, did you get the motion? Sorry, I was distracted.
Yeah.
Then aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Is this fun or what? You know, we're not boring. Jeff?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
I got you, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so, need to move into oh five oh seven, the purchase of some real property.
So, yeah, mayor and council, if, if it's okay, mayor, I'll take a minute on this one. Following the, the approved public process, we've discussed and negotiated with the property owner on this property. This would allow us to purchase fifteen point three, seven, something acres. I know it says fifteen in here, but there's a, a record of survey that's shortly to be recorded that actually has the property at fifteen and a little bit, so.
I'll slow that up a little bit.
Oh, sorry, yes, sir. Sorry.
Three, seven, nine.
Lynn's getting old, design's going bad.
Fifteen point three, seven, nine from the, the.
Peanut gallery.
Good. So, essentially, again, this has gone through a, a proper public process. We have had discussions regarding negotiations in, in closed session as allowed by, by state Good. So essentially, again, this has gone through a, a, a proper public process. We have had discussions regarding negotiations in, in closed session as allowed by, by state code. So as to not taint the, uh, the process and, and, uh, you know, bear all as, as it were. Um, this is now coming before you to, to, again, we just approved the, the funds to be able to do this. Couple of things on the property. Again, it's, it's, uh, just to the west of town on five hundred south, fifteen acres, fifteen point three seven nine.
Yep.
And, uh, it, it allows us to be able to have a future expansion of our cemetery. Our cemetery is estimated right now about seventy-five percent full and, and filling faster and faster every year. I would just mention that, that, um, you know, this property has actually been on the market a number of times over the last couple of years. This is not the first time that I'm aware it's been available. We've actually had developers approach us several times over the last few years about this property, but none of them have been able to successfully negotiate or come up with utilities or other needs that are needed on the property. And so again, a very fair and open process. We, we follow the law on this through legal counsel and, and through the process that we are allowed to go through and, and are expected to go through to negotiate property. The one thing I would say is that, uh, we've talked about the potential of how to repay these funds to the, to the rainy day fund or the general fund. What we would recommend is that we look at a, somewhere around a three to five year repayment on that so that as impact fees come in. And we'll, we'll bring that to you and, and, uh, have our finance director highlight that in the final budget two weeks from today so that you can take a look at that and, and just make sure that we're, sorry, is it two weeks or four weeks from today?
Four.
Four.
Four, four weeks from today. Sorry. When you see the final budget, when you, when you see the final budget, we will have that in there and we'll have some, some explanation on that. And then again, you have the opportunity to adjust that accordingly, right? We can, what, what's been talked about because the cemetery in and of itself, a new property for a cemetery can be and is included in our park's impact fees plan. We can pay for that using park impact fees. Now there's a balance to whether we can pay for all of it or some of it or less than some of it, you know, less some of it than in other years. And so what we will bring to you is a balanced approach where we can still potentially do some projects during the year and also help to, to replenish some of the rainy day fund. That's what we would recommend and we'll bring that to you and, and have that available for you for discussion as part of the final budget.
One, one thing that isn't noted down, might be further down, but, uh, through the negotiation process, we were able to receive, uh, in this transaction nineteen shares of water. Which actually more than will take care of that property. And, uh, we're looking at ways in which we can utilize the property in the coming years as well before we turn it into a cemetery. And have had a couple of offers already for things that we could do, but, uh, we'll just wait. That'll be brought up at another meeting at another time. So, uh, the, the best, the best thing about all this is to me, the negotiations went well. All parties are happy. The, the family that has sold it is extremely happy and, uh, we end up with water. We end up with the property at, uh, at a good price that in the future, uh, will be a gift to the city. So, uh, it's very good, I think. So.
Yeah. Again, I would, I would also solidify it. It, it may appear where the mayor's already signed documents and, and signed the offer, the, the property hasn't closed. This, this action that is before you now is what will authorize a closing. It's not a done deal until you guys make a decision on where we go from here, just so that the, the public and, and folks are aware of that. It's not a, yes, he's signed documents, but those are offer documents and, and nothing is closed at this point in time.
I, I think state law says even if we pay for it and everything else, there's still twenty-four hours or something like that. But I don't, I don't know.
So Norman or Jason, I don't know who would answer this best. What's the process then? We're going to annex upon purchase?
So upon purchase, we'll go ahead and annex that parcel, those parcels into the city. We'll probably do the record of survey first to get it all into our name and compile it into one parcel and then do a, do a annexation process.
Annexation is just a separate process. It'll really be probably a pretty simple annexation, but it's not part of the purchase of the property. It's just after we purchase the property. It would, it would be, uh, nice to have it in the city since it's, it's a Santaquin city, uh, property and, and future, uh, uh.
Facility.
Facility.
Facilities.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions? Anything you want to bring up? Any comments? Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is it seconded?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Just, I got you. Okay. I think that is a great thing. Uh, we need to move on to item number fifteen, the discussion and a possible action on the RAP tax funds that were allocated. Now, the RAP tax are rec, are, are recreational taxes that have been working now for the city for about four or five years. Is that what it is? These, these create funds through this RAP tax, uh, through, uh, all the laws that are dictated to even, even utilize something like this. But once, once they were put into, to gear, um, it's been interesting from my point of view to see the goodness that this is really done and created. Not only for recreation as a whole, it is separate departments within. It's parks. It's all sorts of things. So the, the best part of this is we have an incredible committee that meet together that discuss different places that this money ought to be spent. This is a recommendation that comes from this committee and, uh, I, I just like what they do. This, this is, uh, a committee made up. How many members are on it? Is there six or eight? Three.
I think it's six. Right? Seven? Yeah, seven.
Seven? So these, these recommendations come from the committee, not necessarily the council. And, and so this is good. This is cool. This is places where these monies are needed. So I like the way that it's even grown. Over the last four years, it has more than doubled. And, uh, we're starting to see some places where it's going to make some real differences.
Yeah. So the interesting thing about this is, is this is one tenth of one percent of, of a tax, which is doesn't, it's, it's not a lot. It's one penny on every ten dollars that's spent in Santaquin city. And yet these are the, these are the funds that come to us to allow us to do these projects. So it's fantastic to have this and, and, uh, it, it just is really everything from our basketball court to the bike park to other things that have, you know, the pavilion at, at Allen Pond. Lots of really good facilities have been improved and, and included through these RAP taxes. So it's been really good.
So I know John's been involved in this pretty heavily. Uh, do you want to comment? Or, uh, Norm, do you want to go through each of these items individually? Uh, I know that we went over them in the past meeting, but, uh, a lot of the questions are answered. And these, these aren't necessarily monies that, okay, just go spend it. This is well watched over. So.
Yes.
Mayor, we need to amend this budget by adding six thousand dollars from someplace so that.
Your paycheck.
I don't know where Shannon got it from, but okay. So we do have, we do have the money to make the ADA entrance off the, off the south without eliminating those other two things we talked about earlier.
That, that's good.
There's been some interest earned. We have the RAP tax money in a PTIF account and that over the years, there has been some interest earned on that money. So there is a little bit of extra money in that account.
And that should cover that, that entrance that we want to put in there for ADA.
Budget we're looking at needs to be amended to add that six thousand.
That can be part of your motion, absolutely. But it's good to, good to have that discussion, yeah.
So actually, if you'd like to make that motion and we move ahead.
Mayor, do you want to have John speak to the, any of the items or?
I was just gonna say, is there any questions on any of the items or do you want me to go through it or have you seen it? Um.
I mean, I, I just want to make a comment. I didn't realize that, uh, what was on the first floor? It, it's the, is it the veterans is on the first floor? And there's a lot that's on the first floor that might just be sufficient for, my initial thought was, hey, well, why would we invest so much to just get someone on the first floor? But then I'm realizing there's a lot on the first floor that maybe someone would just be happy to be on the first floor.
There's a veterans room, there's a school classroom, there's a, um, parlor room.
Yeah.
I don't know what's on back past the offices.
You know, that's where I went to school.
Yeah.
That's where I went to kindergarten.
There's a classroom room that shows the old school and it's got pictures of people who went there.
And even with the special events they do, like the spooky museum, that first floor has quite a bit on it.
Yeah.
That would be enjoyable for them to watch, to see.
At some point, we, we've thought a little bit about how do we show virtual options about of the upstairs and maybe we could figure a way to do that downstairs until we're eventually at some point able to do a, an elevator. So, um, was there any questions about any of the items?
No, I liked what we saw. I, I thought it was such a great cross section, you know?
Okay. It does cover things in recreation, arts, parks. I will mention with the arts, over the years, um, just adding cultural arts to the community has been a boon as well. Um, the concert series and this year, the concert series is, is not expanding in days, but in expanding in breadth of what's actually going to be offered. Theme days and activities for families. Um, and then the, um, murals have been exciting. Um, Kyle Vincent's already looking at some potential locations. We'll bring that back here before he, he paints his next mural for us. Um, but, so that's exciting. Um, a lot of funds didn't necessarily go to the park side because in the, the budget, we had a lot of projects earmarked from park impact fee for parks. Um, one highlight will be a new eighteen hole disc golf course up on Summit Ridge. Um, it is amazing views up there.
That says nine on here.
Does it say nine? That needs to be adjusted to say eighteen holes.
Yeah, but it does, oh, maybe it was, uh, to, to go along with the nine in the past. Okay.
Yeah, we'd funded nine on Theater Allen and, and that's kind of maxed out with space. So now we'll be on the west side of the valley and there is some beautiful views up there on top.
What land is that? I'm just kind of curious.
It's Santaquin city land.
That was land that was negotiated as part of the Summit Ridge Development Agreement. Um, it is a, what, what we call a minimally improved open space.
Yeah.
So it has a trail. It has some fencing around it, but it, it's essentially just a, it's not grass. It's not sod. It just is an open space that people can go and have trails. This, this will be a, this will be a fantastic.
He was trying to find out where it was at.
Oh, uh, let me, let me listen a little closer next time. I can show you.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Let me, let me show you where that's at. Really quick, I can, if the county parcel map will work, I can show you right where that's at.
And, and the exciting thing is we've been doing tournaments and we bring people from out of town for these and they've asked, I mean, we, we, in the tournament, we play two holes, but they've asked, do you have any other land that we could do a, a larger course? Eventually, we just keep saying eventually and the opportunity presented itself.
So I don't remember the full acreage. I want to say it's probably about twenty acres. I'm going to try and highlight the area here so that you can see where it's at, but it's essentially.
Twenty-four, right? Is what you had written?
It's all the, oh, come on. It's all of the area up behind the homes in Summit Ridge, even the newer homes that are being built now. It, it's basically unbuildable slopes to get to it.
Okay, yeah.
You'll, you'll see at the back of most of these lots, you'll see some fence posts and some other things, but essentially it's about shape like that right there. Again, it's not thirty acres. It's about twenty-four if I remember, but it's up on the top of that knoll where we can't get water pressure in that area easily. If they needed to provide open space and that kind of thing, but there's, they're already coming from the east side. There's already a trail going up to it from the east side with fence along it.
I think there's one that comes from the southeast too.
Make sure these guys know what they're doing because there's a lot of wind up there.
Just pick up and carry to someone there.
Take it over into Juab County. And, and John, correct me if I'm wrong. I think, uh, for anyone that's chiming in, I think that you have, uh, disc golf to check out from.
We do for free. If people want to come by and pick out. Yeah.
That's awesome.
So that's pretty exciting. There's no water, um, at Theater Allen. They all lose their discs into the pond there. So here it's, it'll be someone's backyard. Now we'll, we'll make sure that we keep it inland, but the exciting thing is, is that's an area that can grow. We've also budgeted for a few scenic benches. There's a couple of spots there that are, just put some benches for people that even want to walk up there. So, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Oh, John, do you want to point out, um, whose idea was it? This RC car course?
Oh.
Which is, it sounds really fun. I, I actually think it was a genius idea.
Yeah. So up at Theater, or, or at Prospector View, right next to the parking lot, there is a little spot, um, I mean, in RC cars, they're just little tiny ones. And we've had people go up there and go on the trels. Like, we had a group one time and that we were up raking rocks and had like thirty, forty cars going up the trels. And they were really polite. We talked to them and said, hey, make sure there's no bikes, you know, coming down and, but they, they created, in, in West Valley City was the last one that I saw. They actually did theirs in town. You just put some rocks and dirt and it doesn't cost a lot to develop it, but you create a little area that just for these little cars. And then they've got clubs and people to come up and bring your kids up or adults can bring their cars up and it, it doesn't take very much space. It's literally not going to affect anything on the bike trels. It's an area that's kind of in between the trels. So.
The, the people actually live here in town and they're part of the club. They called me over a year ago just to go with, for that first time. So they've been really good about wanting to be up there, but I think if we designate that area, that's going to help move them out of the way of having one of those turtles run over with a bi- bicycle. So.
Yeah. And, and I, yeah, I think it'll help get them off the main trels and just in their little area. We'll sign it. So that, that was, I forgot about that.
Yeah.
This, it was exciting. Like, like we've mentioned, there's a lot more money than when we first started four years ago. And so to be able to start to, to come up with some creative ways to use the money to make things better for residents. Um, yep, I think that's, I think that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Then I'd entertain a motion to approve the recreation parks, uh, RAP tax funds allocation.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Do we need to, uh, Art, the motion?
Oh.
He did, he did say that. Do we need to say it again?
Yeah, we probably ought to redo the motion. We just make sure everybody seconds it. So.
Clarification, it should be instead of a hundred and forty thousand, should be a hundred and forty-six.
And including the one item for the museum. That's correct.
You want to make that motion? You know what you're talking about.
Yeah, just, I, I would just say so moved.
Okay. That's good.
Okay.
Do, do you want to say anymore?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the amended, uh, budget for a hundred and forty-six thousand to, to include the, uh, ADA, uh, entrance to the south part, uh, south doors of the museum.
Second. Okay. Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
Good. Okay. We need to convene, um, into the Santa, Santaquin Sanity Community Development and Renewal Agency. For a public hearing and, uh, resolutions.
So public hearing first, but we need to convene into the meeting.
I was just making sure that I wasn't going to forget something. So I'd entertain a motion to convene into the CDRA.
So moved.
Ooh, that was in stereo. Seconded. Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
So now we're aboard with the chairman and board members. So we need to hold the, the public hearing for the CDRA for budget transfer therein. What we're going to do is transfer that money to.
Yeah, this is again, is just a public hearing for the budget that was, the tentative budget that was already set two weeks ago. So just open it up to the public hearing and see if we got any comments or if the council has any questions, we're happy to answer those.
So if there are any questions or anything that has come up in the meantime, we would entertain those.
Did you open a public hearing?
Uh huh. It was seven forty-seven coming out of the sky. Take me down to Memphis.
I thought all we did was convene. I didn't think.
We convened the board. Did we open a public hearing?
We've opened the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. We did.
Do you want me to do it again? We'll open a public hearing. We'll do it one more time. As a CDRA, is there a board member that would give us a, a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay. Since nobody signed up, are there any questions or any discussions? We've gone over this a couple of times within. Any comments? So we went from seven forty-eight to seven forty-nine. I would entertain a motion to close the formal public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution is to, uh, approve the addendum number three for the, uh, Santaquin Peaks LLC estate agreement. And, um, there was a request that came a week ago. We discussed this in our work session. We've discussed it for a little time now. They've asked for a fifteen day extension for, um, the transactions to be prepared, uh, with a new partner that, uh, the Monson and Potter Group have brought in with them and, um, do we need to mention who that is?
No.
Don't need to at this point? I know who it is and, uh, that will be taken care of in the, in the future. I know that we've all discussed that. As a board, I think we have discussed this to an end and I, hopefully we've answered all the questions. If there are any questions, then I'd like to bring it up, uh, at this point. If not, then I would entertain a motion that we approve this addendum to number three so that, uh, um, this can, uh, move forward. So moved?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Board member Rosario.
Aye.
I, that sounds a lot better, doesn't it? Board member Adcock?
Aye.
Board member Sitaway?
Aye.
Board member Meekum?
Aye.
Board member Keel?
Aye.
Wow, that was a mouthful. I kind of like the Lynn's and the Travis things. They go better. Okay. So, uh, Steve, with that vote, and before we move out of this, what, what that means is you, you had asked that we go forward with fifteen day approval. That, uh, pushes that out. Um, are there any questions? We good to go?
Good to go.
Good to go.
We appreciate that.
Good.
So, we will be back soon with that, uh, that proposal for you.
Okay. Yeah, we, we figured in two weeks, we have a meeting-
We'll be talking about this again.
That would be able, we would have everything set up and ready to go, and the approvals can follow right after that, and that, that fit right into the mix of the meetings.
That's our plan.
Okay, so everybody's good? Okay. Uh, we need to go back into our city council meeting, so I would ask, would, uh, someone make a motion to leave the CDRA and become a councilman for a minute?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded?
Well, second.
Brian?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Now you're back to the council. We need to convene to the Saniquin Local Building Authority uh, for a public hearing. These are all to meet the requirements set forth with the state. We talked about this, uh, some time ago, so, and, and went over the budget, so, uh, have to open up a public hearing for the Saniquin Local Building Authority and give us a chance to discuss it, and then we'll move on, so I would entertain a motion to convene into the Saniquin Local Building Authority.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded? Second? Oh, Brian?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Okay, we're now into the, uh, Saniquin Special Service District. Nope, we're in the local building authority. Yeah, we're into the mill. I would, uh, propose that we open a formal public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded? And seconded. Brian?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
So this is a formal public hearing for our local building authority, uh, and the budget transfers therein for the twenty twenty-four year. No one's signed up? Are there any comments or that anyone would like to make? These are all published again, and, uh, we've had a chance to review those, so, uh, this just meets the, the needs. By the way, it's seven fifty-four. If we get that. Any other comments? Then, uh, we will move on. And close, I, so I would like to ask that we close the, uh, yeah, local building authority.
No, form, form of a hearing.
Oh, no, it's the-
Formal hearing.
The public hearing. So, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Brian?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Okay. So, now we need to go into one more public hearing, and that's the-
We need to, we need to leave the local building authority first.
Oh, didn't, we didn't do that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. God, I need like this thing written out for all of these items, so we don't miss it. You know that? Moved and seconded. Travis?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Okay. Now we need to go into the special service districts.
So moved.
Seconded. Travis?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
And we need to open a formal public hearing for, uh, special service district uh, for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget transfers therein.
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded. Brian?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
We're now in a public hearing for the, uh, special service district. Goodness sakes. There's gotta be a better way to do this. Nobody signed up for this? Did, everybody had a chance to read through that, because it was just casual reading. Any questions? It was seven fifty-five, almost seven fifty-six when we did that. No questions?
Did you, did we open a public hearing or?
Yeah, and nobody's commented?
Okay, perfect.
Hi, we did.
Okay, then I would propose that we close the public hearing.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
And seconded?
Third.
And a third. Brian?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
That takes care of number nineteen. Is that everything?
Leave that meeting and go back to the district.
I'll make that motion.
Good. Motion to go back in. Second, Travis?
Hi.
Lynn?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Brother, we're back in the meeting.
There we are.
Okay, we've taken care of all of the business. Don't have any questions. We've spent all the money we proposed to spend. After years of looking, we now have the approval to purchase a brand-new cemetery. We've, we've paid off the grant or approved to pay the grant, so we're in good shape tonight. We've approved the extension for the Lane and Potter Group, and, uh, look forward to this. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. So, uh, we'll move on. Let's, uh, go to the reports. Um, Jason, do, let's start with you.
Alright, so you, you might have seen, uh, us and some of the staff out on Main Street today. We had our, our May flower planting luncheon slash event to, to do that, so we appreciate all those who helped out with that, and the flowers are now planted, and, and I know Public Works got the sprinklers going, so, uh, that's always something to look forward to, and, and, uh, we're, again, appreciative of everybody who helped with that. We have, um, yeah, just upcoming pending applications and stuff, uh, for DRC and Planning Commission. Uh, we have a couple of traffic control requests, uh, around town, and then we have a, a final plat for Vincent Oaks, which is up on, on the, the east bench. For Planning Commission, we have a couple of public hearings for, again, some more state legislation related to the subdivision review process that, just trying to, to make sure we're in conformance with that, uh, and then some, also some other touch-up related to state legislation for the process for how we take care of boundary line adjustments and plat amendments. Uh, we also have a conditional use permit for signage for, uh, O'Reilly Auto Parts. So a couple pending applications there. And I think that's probably it, uh, for me tonight.
Can you tell me a little bit more about the east bench? Is that the seventy acres that's been going back and forth?
No, so, on, on your next city council agenda, there will be, uh, an annexation petition on the agenda. That, that is probably what you're referring to. That's a big chunk of area where, where developers working on annexing that and, and-
I thought, I thought there's an issue with infrastructure and it wasn't possible.
Well, there's, there's a number of things there that are unanswered questions. Uh, one of them being a development plan that obviously is part of this annexation, the council's gonna want to look at and, and see if it's, it's something that's gonna work for the city to, to annex in conjunction with, uh, their plans. So we'll, we'll look at that closer. No, this, this Vince, Vincent, uh, Oaks is just like a five or six, uh, lot subdivision.
Okay.
Uh, it's up there.
It's four fifty south and nine hundred east.
Yeah, so it's, it's one that, uh, it has been looked at before. This is a final plan, so it's gone through preliminary and stuff like that. It's just been taking a little bit to get through that process, so, yeah, the, the annexation, the, the development that you're thinking of, that, that you've kind of heard about is, is called the Mulberry Annexation. So that'll be on your next agenda and, and something that our city recorder's been working on to, to take through the formal annexation process. So I think that's it for me.
Norm?
Yeah, Mayor Council, as you can see, the Main Street project continues to move forward. Um, we, we encourage folks to continue to support those businesses on Main Street. Would remind everybody that there is parking on that first block, south of the post office. There's parking behind. It may be not quite as convenient as being able to pull up to the curb and, and, uh, go to some of those businesses, but they have restored the sidewalk and, uh, given folks a good, a good walking path to get to those businesses on, on the front there. There are other businesses to the, to the east and, and that are being affected as well. We just encourage you that the businesses are still open. We encourage you to, to patronize those businesses and go and spend your dollars locally and, and help support these businesses. It may not be quite as convenient as it has been, but from what we've heard, others have told us, yeah, there's, we're finding parking behind. We're finding the ability to get there. Yeah, we have to walk a, you know, a few hundred feet more or something like that, but it, they are accessible and they are, we, we would encourage you to support them. The chamber even put a, put a, uh, a, a thing in their recent newsletter that went out to, yesterday, a day before, encouraging folks to, to help and frequent those businesses as well. The, the Main Street project is progressing feather, uh, fairly well, considering that there's a half a dozen different private utilities, well, public utilities. Uh, contractors, subcontractors, property owners, businesses, et cetera, that are all involved there, but, but relatively smooth thus far, even though it has had some disruption. I, I think that they've, the, the contractor's done a really good job at trying to keep those disruptions to a minimum. Again, it is construction. We would urge folks to, to use caution and, and stay on sidewalks and areas. If there's areas that are marked off, don't go on those areas, because they're likely are trenches or other areas. Just, just know that that project is proceeding a- about as best as it can right now as far as timing and progress and schedule. Would also remind the council and the public that Monday is Memorial Day. The office will be closed, so staff has that day off, so we would encourage you to, to go to the Memorial Day breakfast or, or, a- and, and not just staff, but residents as well. Memorial Day breakfast, and there'll be, my understanding, there'll be a flag, flag raising that day as well. So just, we, we encourage you to, to, you know, be with your families and, and show respect that day. We, we did bring up, the mayor brought up the, some, some type of memorial for Officer, Sergeant Huser, and will continue to support whatever you and the, and the mayor decide to, or direct us to do on that. Again, there were some funds that were set aside for potential memorial that could be potentially doubled by somebody that has offered the mayor to, to match costs of they come in. I, I don't know what that looks like, but we'll certainly continue to have those talks and explore those, uh, items. I think that that's probably all that I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on other projects or areas of the city.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to echo what, um, Norm said about, um, I have, I've noticed that there's been parking and it's been accessible to get to businesses. Maybe it's a little bit more inconvenient, but, um, we just recommend that we support our local businesses, um, that's what attracts more businesses, is seeing that, um, commerce that's currently happening, so. Um, I also wanted to, um, ma, I think Mayor gave this to each of the council members, but it's the Payson, Saniquin Passport Summer. In the past, our community services department, uh, had put this together and has passed it off to the Chamber of Commerce. And I have to admit, I'm, I'm someone that really focuses on future opportunity or growth. And I, I need to take a moment to recognize, uh, Jim, who's the president and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Has done an amazing job with this. He does an amazing job at the chamber and is doing so much with so few resources and, you know, being part-time and, and what he's taken this from just Saniquin to now Payson as well. Uh, there are tons of activities in here, from Saniquin City to Saniquin Library. Uh, it's really fun. Uh, my kids have participated in the past and ends with a, a pool party. I think, and, and these are at the library, right? And at city offices, is that where we have them now?
So, they are available there. You can also, the, the newsletter that will go out on the first of the month will have a QR code in it, and they can download it electronically and do it that way, my understanding. So, yeah, it should be at the library here in the city offices, anywhere that they can, they can get those, and again, that QR code, so it will be available quite readily.
And, um, and I want to, um, also recognize, uh, local business that has helped put these together and helped the chamber with that, it was Pioneer Press, um, who's really been supportive of that, and so that's what's really made this possible, so. Yeah, so if you haven't already, grab these. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else.
That's it? Okay, Art?
I'll take up the rest of his time. Uh, Monday, May thirteenth, we had, uh, a funeral and, and burial for Officer Hoosier. Knowing that I wasn't going to Salt Lake and I had the opportunity to view that funeral on TV, I chose to go to some water meetings in Salem. I went to the Mount Nevo Water Association meeting at seven thirty, and immediately after, at eight thirty, they had the Sumo meeting. Those meetings are now, uh, back-to-back together on Monday. They're not on Thursday evening anymore. Yay. Out of the Mount, Mount Nevo Water Association meeting, um, they talked about their budget and they're having budget hearings a- as we are. Originally, they said there wasn't going to be any assessment to the city, that they had the twenty-eight hundred dollars that they needed in their budget to cover their yearly expenses. However, that changed as the meeting went on. Um, they are waiting for a grant from Denver. Uh, apparently the last one expired in June. There was a technical committee report. The Colorado River is fully allocated. They're trying to instigate something called groundwater tracking. They've hired a technical committee for data collection. Um, there's a computer program that's thirty-two K for the first year and, uh, twenty-four K for the second year, and that's creating the budget adjustment, uh, amendment that they're going to have to do, and that will result in then an allocation to the cities at the appropriate same percentage levels that they always have done.
That, that amount, so the council is aware, is probably just going to be a couple thousand dollars for the city side of things. The, the, uh, Utah County, uh, Central Utah and, uh, um, GVLD pick up the majority of those costs typically, so as long as it's the same type of allocation, that twenty-four, thirty-two thousand dollars will look like maybe seven to ten percent of that would be ours.
The plan is, all agencies will self-report. Um, the farmers typically report at the beginning of the season and, and the growing season. The state engineer said they don't really want to be involved in it, unless they have to be. They'll just be the police to make sure that, that we do the reporting that we need. Um, the cities hold enough water rights to affect groundwater levels. The plan is that the data will be submitted monthly. Uh, the first week in December, the consultants will review the data. The first Tuesday in March, the technical commi- committee will meet together. The first Tuesday in April, they'll finalize the groundwater management plan, and then the second week in May, the technical committee presents the plan to the board. So we're talking about next year, right? Basically, a year from now. Uh, the next meeting will be on Monday, June the tenth at seven thirty, and that'll be a public hearing for their budget. And then Sumo had their meeting, so the meeting was an hour. Sumo had their meeting immediately after. Um, they went over their expenses, um, and, uh, Norm, maybe you can help me with this. Apparently, um, Sumo has to pay the Central Utah Water Conservatory District five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, uh, a year for ULS water. What's ULS water? I was way out of my league.
CUP?
No.
ULS water is the Utah Lake System under the CUP program, Central Utah Project. And, and that five hundred thousand dollars right now is allocated a hundred percent to Spanish Fork, because they're the only folks on the ULS system, the south end of the ULS system, that have water coming through the system right now. As you know, the pipeline's not here, not hooked up. There's still a leg between us and our leg, and so we will have those, those payments coming due in a couple of years. They anticipate having water to us in twenty twenty-six, so in twenty twenty-seven, likely, we will start having to pay our allocations, and it's not quite five hundred thousand dollars. If we take the full allotment, it will be around three hundred thousand, three hundred twenty-five per year to help pay for that.
And, and, and we already have, uh, multiple years-
Right.
That are banked, ready to pay, so we're, we're ahead of it.
Utah, Utah Lake System under the Central Utah Project.
Uh-huh.
Still learning. They approved their tentative budget, set a public hearing for the tenth. Their meeting's gonna be at nine, giving, um, Mount Nevo a little extra time, um, on that day. Yeah, Spanish Fork's gonna purchase five hundred acre feet of CUP. They think our assessment, or it will be, I'm not sure which, uh, will be, uh, for whatever, maybe just the yearly budget is about sixteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, sixteen fifty-five eighty, exactly. But the meetings are back-to-back now, and so, wherever, they figured out, well, most of us are already there. Let's just go ahead and do it and get it over with, and obviously, I, I totally concur as an alternate. Let's see, next, Tuesday on May fourteenth, we had, seven PM, we had a ham radio meeting that went very well. We acknowledged some, uh, real f- some real failure on our part of not being participatory in the shelter-in-place alert that we had. We should have had a, a program for all of us to get on the radio and, and help to communicate with other people, and, and we're, we're working on trying to improve that. Wednesday on May 15th at 8:00 AM, we had a chamber breakfast, thanks to Jim Rowland and Brian Del Rosario and his wife, nice lady, by the way. The meeting went well. There was few people from Santa Quinn there, actually, but it went well. There's a lot of interaction between those that did attend. We did have some difficulty getting in the building. The meeting started at eight o'clock and the doors weren't unlocked, so I kind of had to stand by the doors and let people in so they could have access to the building. Okay, next. I, I'm going to be here a while, so relax.
Thanks for bringing that up, by the way. I forgot about that, so thanks.
Citizens Concerns, Safety and Appearance, between Center Street and 100 East, down by the Public Works Building, and Ginger Gold Road and 900 North, there's a bunch of condos or, or multifamily dwelling buildings, and there's a donut hole in the middle. Well, that donut hole, I guess is going to have something built there eventually, but it's full of jersey barriers, it's full of wood, a big pile of wood. I hope they don't burn it down there. I hope. But that needs to be cleaned up. It's a safety issue. The kids can go in there and play. Why, why doesn't the city require those developers to clean up their mess when they're done? I noticed today the same thing between the clock tower and the dentist's office, that vacant lot, it's full of some little pieces of cement. It's all grown up in weeds and stuff. Why, why do we allow that to be left unsightly? And what can we do about it?
So both of those pieces of property are private property. The one area that you're talking about down on the north end of town by Ginger Gold Road is planned to be some, some multifamily units, three buildings, if I remember correctly. If there are safety hazards there, it's something we can certainly address, but if they're going to store their construction material and they have future construction to be there, I, I don't know that there's much that we can do with that. So if there are safety concerns, we can certainly address it. But unsightliness, things like weeds that are fire hazards, we can certainly address, but, but I'm not sure that we have anything in city code in either location to require them to pretty it up, as it were.
Okay, I'm sure it's a fun place for kids to play, but.
I, I understand.
Residents in that area.
But remember that it's also private property, so the kids probably shouldn't be playing there. The kids should probably be playing in their own yards or in the school yard or, or on the playgrounds that are provided there in those areas. So that's, that's what I would say is that if, again, if there are safety hazards, we will look into that. But if there are other issues, you know, I guess, you know, if you want to call it a nuisance, then we can call it a nuisance, but it is something that, that they have the right to do what they want to do on their property. We can't stop them from staring, storing wood or jersey barriers or pipe for that matter or anything of that nature.
Okay. I'm going to skip ahead because it's addressing the same issue. Across from the entrance to the cemetery, there is two mobile homes. One's a single wide and one's a double wide. I can't believe that those aren't, in addition to the weeds and a fire hazard, a safety hazard, who knows who, who or what lives or grows in there, and can't something be done to, to renovate that hazard?
So those are private homes.
Is that the same place with the concrete that was around it?
No. He's talking about directly west on 400 South.
Oh, west.
There's two, there's two mobile homes there. Those are, those are habitated homes. Those are homes that people live in.
There's a third one to the, the most east that looks like it's probably lived in, but I don't think the two I'm referring to are. One says has a posted sign on it. That's a double wide, and then there's a single wide to the west of that.
Again, we'll look into it and see if there's a, if there's an inhabitable one there or something that needs to be condemned. That certainly we can look at.
It, it just can't be anything but a safety and health hazard. Okay, I'll go back to where I was.
Is that straight across from the?
Straight south of the entrance to the cemetery.
Straight south or straight west?
I'm sorry, north. Straight north.
Straight north from, from the north entrance on, on First East? Is that the one you're talking about?
I guess.
Yeah, there's, there's actually a couple around the cemetery that are, are in, in a, a state of disrepair. So it's, it's always a challenge to, you know, and, and there are code enforcement mechanisms that we can do, like a nuisance or, you know, weeds or hazards and stuff like that. It does get tricky because it is private property and it does get tricky because, you know, people are habitating it and, and it's.
I don't believe the two I'm referring to are lived in.
Okay, if they're not, we can, we can look into it, but it's, it's always, yeah, it's, it's a case-by-case situation, and sometimes the code enforcement can be trickier than, than we would like it to be.
I think it's on 150 East.
Right here?
On the north side of the road that he's talking about.
Right here, Art?
Yes.
We, we can look into it.
There's three.
That's where the concrete was.
There's a single, then there's a double, and there's one that's probably habitated.
We can look into it.
Okay, thank you. I'm personally frustrated with the status of our EOC room. It was designated as an EOC room, as such, in a grant that we received, and that grant allowed us to have an emergency generator in this building. And that building, that room was designated as a primary EOC, yet no one has access to the building, to the room. It's, it's frustrating for me personally that, that city council or the mayor or the emergency manager doesn't have a key to that room that will eventually be exclusively an EOC room. Right now, granted, we don't have the money to make it an EOC room, so it's kind of be used for a lot of things. Chamber breakfasts, ham radio, but eventually, we need to remember as a city that that's an EOC room. It was part of a grant that we received that gave us the money to get the generator for this building. And I don't think it should have such exclusivity to accessibility to it. And so that's, that's, that's a frustration for me.
Doesn't, my key fits that door, I think. I do have a key.
Okay, well.
I can get into just about everything.
Well, you should.
Yeah.
But why can't the city council?
Well, they complain a lot, so they keep them out.
Okay.
I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't.
Do you have a different key?
I do.
He's got a master probably.
I have a master.
I would like that situation corrected if at all possible. I'm wondering about the status of the council, the council photo meeting that was made in January.
The what?
A picture of all of us.
Oh.
The photo?
We broke the camera and.
Oh, that'd probably be my fault.
Had a heck of a time developing anything.
That'd be my fault.
I don't know. I asked about that the other day.
Yeah, it was actually February, but we'll find out where, or March, we'll find out where we're at with that. I, I have not heard back, but we'll check on it.
As may have been mentioned, there's a Memorial Day breakfast at the fire station on Monday from 7:00 to 10:00. $6 a plate, $30 a family. Please, please support the Fire Department Association. We, as the American Legion Post, also have a, our annual program at the cemetery at 11:00. Tuesday on June the 4th at noon, there may or may not be a hike with the mayor. This was brought to the attention of the senior citizens last Thursday, and I don't know if it's happening. I don't know where we're going, and I'm not sure how many senior citizens can hike.
Well, that makes it easy on me.
Yeah, anyway, let's see, what else?
I'll go. I'm fine. I just don't know much about it, so I'll make something up.
Okay. So do you want me to tell them tomorrow that's going to happen?
I think they've already handed out invitations.
What's their, what's their date?
June 4th.
Hike with the mayor, June the 4th. Gosh, you $5 for refreshments, but he's worth it.
That's our new city council.
Friday, June the 14th, American Legion's going to have a flag retirement program at Centennial Park. Anyone who would like to observe a brief flag retirement program, I currently have about 40 flags. Five of them are, are five by eight, so they're, they're pretty big. There was a meeting this evening from 5:00 to 7:00 in Payson regarding the front-runner extension program. They'll be meeting again later this month, I believe it is, in Spanish Fork and in Springville, which are the other two cities that they're going to have stops at. I would like to encourage, as has already been said tonight, supporting our local businesses, and I have permission to say this. I talked to the owner of the Santa Queen and their revenue is down 50%. They hired staff to run the facility, and then it's turned out that they don't need the staff. And this, they're, it's, it's been hard for them this month. So if you can support the local businesses, that would be great.
I, I actually have, have pulled in there and bought hamburgers from the drive-up, and it was just as easy as any other time. No issue. So it's, I think people are just afraid to make a turn.
Yes.
On Main Street. And, and really, it's, it's really quite easy to do.
Santa Quinn does let you order online, so.
Appreciate the encouragement. Thank you.
Pre-order. It is there. I've been there. I mean, look at me. I've eaten it too much.
Now that we have publicly approved the purchase of a lot, of a future cemetery sometime after I'm long gone, I would like the city to strongly encourage them to consider a resolution or ordinance, whatever you call the thing, a rule, that only flat headstones be placed in that new 15 acres of cemetery. I talked to Jason Callaway and Travis that are, is in charge of the cemetery, and they would greatly appreciate having the ability to mow without it being so time-consuming and having to worry about damaging headstones, which a member in my neighborhood has had their headstone damaged twice by lawnmowers. That's, that, that's a risk because, you know, they're machines and things happen. But I'd like us to really consider having only flat headstones in the new part, so it'd be easier for maintenance. As we continue to grow, we're putting a greater burden on Public Works and requiring them to do more, and, and I'm not sure they have the resources to, to meet all that. I grew up in southeast Florida where it rains a lot and it grows a lot, and they mow a lot. And you have to have a flat headstone down there. They don't allow anything else. I'm not saying changing anything in the current cemetery, even though there is a plot that's restricted for flat, but I, I would like us to really strongly consider it in the, in the new part. Now, this is rumor mill, but this is the place to find out the facts. I've understood, I understand that there might be a lift station problem at the industrial park and also a transformer problem, that there's not enough power to adequately address the businesses that could come in because they, they currently can't get a transformer that's big enough, and also that for some, whatever reason we can't get, we aren't putting a lift station there, and so we're devising some sort of temporary septic tank system. Can somebody shed some light on that?
Yeah, so the, the transformers are 100% the responsibility of the, of the property owners that buy the property, because we don't know what size they need. We don't know if it needs to be this big or that big theoretically in.
Right.
Kilovolts. So I, I don't know of any concern with, with transformers. We're, we're not in that side of it. We're in the primary side of it that doesn't have transformers, and we are moving forward. The, the board approved several months ago, the, the half a million dollars for the primary voltage wiring and, and infrastructure to get over there and the conduit. It's in our current contract with Greenhall, so there's no concern with that as far as that goes. Again, if it's on the, if it's on the secondary side, on the private side, I'm unaware of that, but that's outside of our control and having them to do with Rocky Mountain Power.
Okay.
As far as the lift station is concerned, we purchased the lift station. It's actually here. The, the new manholes will be going in for that. We've ordered the power drop from Rocky Mountain Power. It's going according to plan, and we are doing what we have set out to do from the beginning. There's still some work to do as far as making that functional and, and having it installed, but we are doing exactly what we had said we would do and what we've contracted to do with, with the property owners.
So the information, for those that are listening at home, the information I was furnished is, is false?
I, I'm not going to say that anybody's fault. I'm just going to tell you where we're at, and that's where we're at.
Yeah, what, what Norm has said is exactly where we are.
So there's, there's no problem as far as sewage. There will be a lift station, no temporary septic tank?
There, there will be a temporary situation until the lift station is installed for one business, and we are working on that right now.
Okay.
That's already taken care of. It's already moving forward. It's part of our original plan. We, we knew that there was going to need to be some adjustments as we went through this, because if you remember when we very first started this, the thought was to have septic systems rather than having the sewer all done out there, but the mayor has, has successfully negotiated with all of the property purchasers that they help us with that, and that's where that money is going.
Okay. Do we know of a timetable of, of the lift station?
Like I say, the lift station is here. There's still infrastructure that needs to be installed to make that operational. I, I, I would bet that we probably won't even have power for that from Rocky Mountain Power for maybe several more months at this point in time.
Okay, so in the fall-ish?
Late summer, the fall-ish.
You have to realize that, that we ordered or talked to Rocky Mountain Power two years ago, trying to get this set up and designed, and they took, what, 10 months to get to us to start with? Something like that. And so it's, that is a slow machine to get going.
Yeah.
Now, you know, we've got a lot of conduit laid. We've got everything ready to pretty much go. It's, it's, we're right on schedule.
Again, there's a lot of, there's a lot of infrastructure that still needs to be installed, but that's been our plan all the way along. There's only one, one business that's going to be going in, which is BDS, TPW, that's going to be going in there. We have sufficient capacity in the system to, to treat that as a, as a, as a holding tank, and it will, and it will be fine. There will be no, no concerns with it.
Good. Long for a head in the right direction. Yeah, we, we talked about that for quite a while, way up front, just to make sure that we could get that one through, because we knew they'd be the first ones in. But everything else is fitting our timelines. I, I haven't seen anything else.
Well, it's not quite fitting our timelines, but we're moving as quickly as we can. Things in government and things with utilities and large infrastructure like that just do not happen as fast as, as probably most of us would like, but we are, all of the plans are still in place. We're still moving down that road, and we will still be able to service according to the needs that we have out there.
Excellent, good. Is it possible that I can get a key to the EOC?
I'll, I'll visit with the mayor about that. We can have a discussion about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Jeff?
All right, um, let's see. First, I want to thank everyone in town and from out of town, actually, came into that last Monday Sergeant Hoosier's procession. There were hundreds, if not thousands, of people lining Summer Ridge Parkway and all the way up to the cemetery. There were so many cars, I got my first sunburn of the year sitting out there watching it, so I appreciate that. So that was great. It was nice to see that support. Couple days later, went up to Ogden to the RMPPRA banquet. We got best rodeo again, Santa Quinn days. I think it was, they said four years in a row or five years in a row, something like that. People, according to Paige, cities are specifically trying to beat us. They're looking at what we do and trying to do better. They, we've got a target on our back, but we'll keep winning, so good for us. Thinking about that, we got water days coming up in a couple of months. I noticed our brand-new rodeo sign is missing a couple of letters. I hope we're, someone is aware of that and gets the S and the A put back up, so it's Santa Quinn and not Intecu-Quinn, whatever it would be. So if we can get those replaced before the rodeo, that'd be great. Everyone's already mentioned the Memorial Day breakfast. Let's see, in a week and a half, more, on June 4th, or sorry, June 3rd, there will be a Family Night at the Museum. Looks like they're opening up a woodworking display for a few weeks, and it's kind of the kickoff of that. Free admission. I think they're going to have nachos and some games and stuff, so put that in your calendar. And then the Saturday after that, June 8th, there is a Family, Family Fitness Festival at Centennial Park. So 5K and a one-mile run for kids and just a bunch of other activities to focus on health and fitness and all that. That's, that's all I've got.
Okay. Lynn?
Thank Art for attending the, the water meetings. I wasn't able to go that day. And to echo what Jeff said about the, the funeral last week, just to continue, things kind of pass on a little bit for, for most of us, but continue to keep the family in our prayers and thoughts for, just continue to do that. That, that's going to be needed for a long time, and our, our men in blue here in town lost a brother. Keep them in your thoughts and prayers.
Thanks, Lynn. Travis? Travis?
Next week, May thirtieth at eight o'clock, the library is kicking off their summer reading program with a movie in the park and it's supposed to be, well, it will be amazing. So, uh, I won't be able to make it. I'll be out of town, but it's gonna be great. Uh, with all the talk about water, I'm a little disappointed. We don't know the situation on the water on the mountain. Norm, you let me down?
We talked about it.
I missed it then. I didn't see the graph.
Right here.
Did you?
Right here.
Yeah.
Right there.
Okay. I missed it. I don't, I must've been in the bathroom.
Zoned out.
The best part of the meeting.
Mayor, can we strike that from the record? I, I wanna echo what everybody else is saying about the support that this community has shown. Uh, with Sergeant Hoosier's unfortunate passing. Being a part of the law enforcement community, it's really humbling. And, uh, it's sad to me that it took this tragedy to pull our community together. Somebody planted a blue line flag in my yard and it's still there and it's, I really appreciate it. It just makes me love this community even more and I'm grateful for the opportunity that I have to serve on the council. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Thanks for your service. We have two policemen on this, this.
A former.
Council and, uh, you know, that's a, it's a tough job and, and you know what? It has pulled the city together and we just need to make sure we stay together and work through everything. There's gonna be more challenges. We've still got challenges that are, that are sitting out there and so we'll deal with them. There's a couple of things that I do want to, uh, just update you with. I had a chance to drive up to Tenny's Flat the other day and, uh, to the ten thousand people that live in this city beyond the other ten thousand that didn't even know we had a canyon. That is absolutely beautiful. Um, I've driven across the new bridge and, uh, drove all the way to, uh, Tenny's Flat and with, with the superintendent of the job. But, uh, we took a few pictures and gosh, I miss that canyon. We oughta have a great big ribbon cutting when this opens up and a big party up there because, uh, I've missed it. And, uh, gosh, it's neat. Um, they are doing a fantastic job, the, the way they have worked on the stream sides and the roadsides and the, what they're, what they still have to do is plenty of work. But there's a couple of surprises ahead, I think, and, uh, we're trying to work that out right now with Forest Service. And so we're making some good headway. Next thing is we had a short discussion and I just wanna say this for the record and that was a short discussion in our work meeting about, um, Bill Hoosier Park or naming something after him. We want a monument. We've had so many things that have been brought forward. And as a council, we're gonna bring this up over the next few months and discuss a direction that we want to go. If it's renaming a park, if it's naming a street, if it's renaming the, the city, we're, we'll go that way. But, uh, all of us are gonna put some input in. We don't wanna react within the first few weeks, but what we do have, we have people that are, are, uh, promising money for, uh, a way to build a memorial of some sort. And, uh, we're just trying to make sure that we have our thoughts in the right place. And, uh, we, we do this very professionally and, uh, in the right manner. So, um, we should be bringing this up. Maybe every, every meeting we'll just say, anybody got any ideas and take five minutes and discuss it for a while. And then actually have a work meeting on it and we'll just work on it for quite some time. And then we'll, we'll give a couple of reports and see how we go from there. So we are working that way, that way and, uh, we, we'll, we'll work on finding a good memorial for this because Bill meant a lot to every one of us and, uh, will do for a long time.
Might be meaningful to have a goal, at least of having a, a one-year anniversary and, and having something officially in place in a one-year anniversary.
Yeah, and, and I think over the next few months, let's work on it. I just, I don't wanna be so reactive that we forget something or we miss something. And so let's, let's be thoughtful, think deep and come up with some thoughts on it. I met with the fire chief the other day and he was talking with me about the new fire station. It usually comes up. But, um, we're setting that aside so that we have money in the, in the future to pay for that. And we are under directives, you know, if, if you take I S O and a few others as directives where we need to be and we need to make sure that we have adequate coverage for our city. Our city isn't four square blocks each direction anymore. It's about eight miles across. And, um, he is looking out for the best of us. We're working on, uh, safer grants and all kinds of things to man the stations in the way in which we need to. But we have twenty thousand people that are counting on us. And, uh, so I think we need to have a few discussions in work meetings going forward. And so when things get a little bit slow, when we feel we could take it, I, I would like to review kind of where we are. Let's make sure that we've got a plan going forward and all of a sudden we don't just say, hey, why don't we build a fire station? Let's make sure that we're doing our due diligence ourselves. And so we'll review the plans. We'll take a look. I wanna go on a few field trips. Look at whatever we're doing ahead of time and then we'll be able to make some good discussions because of good decisions because this is an investment into the city. So, uh, we do have the property. We just need to agree on where we're going and everything else. So in the future, let's put that as an item for those work sessions and just discuss it here and there, okay? Not as filler per se, but I think it would be really good. I did wanna mention that, uh, our, our Santa Quinn Peaks Industrial Park is moving along quite well. We have some good businesses that are set up and ready to roll. Uh, we are continuing meeting with a lot of new people and hopefully we'll have a couple of more new things in the, in the coming month or so to sign off on. So with all of that, um, we're making that headway and I feel good. The other thing that's moving along is, uh, the business, um, and commercial focus that has been going on. I, I spoke with a, a developer or a builder today of businesses and, uh, very positive on Santa Quinn as a whole and, uh, has just purchased some of the, and is working at purchasing some of the other property to move along, is. And, um, I think with the new businesses that we've brought in, it's made a significant difference. You know, we're seeing sales tax at more than double over the last couple of years and, uh, that makes a big difference, a big difference on our budgets and what we can do to help with different programs throughout the city. So, um, still meeting with businesses, uh, more than four a month anymore. And it's, it's got a lot going on with it. A lot of good people. Great people that are investing in Santa Quinn and to Santa Queen and to all the rest of those businesses. I'm even thinking of going and getting a haircut after I was shamed by Jeff that he went and had a haircut at the haircut place, at the barber shop.
My son.
Well, I thought you said you got one.
He'll trim your beard. He does a good job.
Oh, okay. So he did have a haircut once. But you know what? Uh, I, I just wanna encourage everybody, go down and support these businesses with all we've got. I, you know, I, we've been trying to encourage the businesses to be here and they're struggling with Main Street. We knew that they would and they have a public relations, uh, firm that is working with Landmark and hopefully there's no issues that are outstanding. It's mostly just residents are afraid to make a right turn in that construction. And we just need to work through it, I guess. It's good to see that they're putting sidewalks down. That's great, you know? They'll probably start ripping out the curb pretty quick. And then, you know, I think following shortly after that, we're gonna see new curb go back in and things get closed up and hopefully before long, those, those couple of blocks that are opened up, the three blocks that'll be opened up will be filled in and we'll be ready for the next, to the west for next year.
Are we doing anything while the streets are torn up with the infrastructure on our own? Are there sewer lines or anything that go down the middle of Main Street?
Oh, there's everything going on.
Are we gonna try to replace that while this road's torn up?
We already are. Yeah, there's no sewer lines, but we are replacing P I lines and all of the service laterals to the businesses and the homes that are on Main Street will be brand new starting this. Other than what's on their side will be brand new after this project is done. So we are.
Good.
There, there was a, a, uh, a proposal to redo a water line that we've had some failures with in front of the public safety across from Dollar, uh, the Dollar Store. That's the next phase and we may have some discussion about that, but that, to do the entirety from four hundred east to five hundred west was about two million dollars, which was just completely outside the budget. So we, we may still need to do about a block of that, but that's the next phase for next construction season. But everything that's being done now, the, the water lines that are in there are not being replaced, but the laterals, the service lines are both P I and culinary and, and just making sure that we have everything up to snuff and up to our current standard with no more copper, no more galvanized. Now again, that might be different on their side of the meter, on the, on the customer's side of the meter, but we're, we're, as far as city infrastructure to get to the back of the sidewalk and, and put new meters in, we're doing all of that now.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the city part so that we don't.
We are.
A couple of years from now, have to tear up a brand new road.
Yep, we are.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They've looked at every piece of this. There's, there's even old irrigation culverts that are coming out throughout the thing. So, you know, we're making some really good headway.
Good.
And, uh, I like what I'm seeing down there.
You can't close that door. That door has to remain open, please. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? We good? Well, it's eight forty-three. Uh, I need to, we're gonna take a break here for a few minutes so I could talk to a couple of people, but we need to go into an executive session that will take care of discussing the character and professional competence or physical, mental health of an individual and, uh, to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation and or purchase or exchange of real property. So, uh, I, I need a motion to adjourn to an executive session. So moved? Second?
Mayor, we need to do that separately. We'll have to go into one and then come back out or adjourn out that one. Yeah, and then, and then go back into the other one. So the first one can still be moved, but it will be for the first purpose.
All right. We can do that. Wow. Still moved?
Still seconded.
Third. Ryan?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna adjourn, uh, but we wanna take a break for about fifteen minutes before we go into this executive session. Uh, I do wanna talk to Steve and.